Good to see each and every one of you here this evening. And we want to begin with our prayer, well, prayer and pledge by Charlotte P., Commissioner. Sorry. Pardon?
I'll be Charlotte for a few minutes.
That's okay with me if she agrees to it.
Let us bow. Our Holy Father, we are indeed grateful for the many wonderful blessings that you give us in life. We thank you for our country, for our county, and for all the things that we have that we get to enjoy in this life. Father, we pray tonight as we deliberate on business that pertains to our county that you will give us wisdom, help us to make the decisions that are best for our county and for our citizens here, and help us to do what is right in your sight. Father, we pray for those who are first responders, for our military. We're thankful for our veterans. We pray that you will bless our military that are away from their homes tonight, that you will give them safe passage back home. Father, forgive us when we fail you in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Secretary, we need roll call and determination of quorum.
Jim Averwater. Jeff Phillips. Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Vogel. Here. Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones. Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Dennis Reed.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Quorum has been determined. We'll move down to item four, approval of our minutes, and I'll ask my vice chairman, Lee Vogel, do our October 10th minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes of the October 10th meeting and found those to be in good order, and therefore make a motion to approve.
Motion approved. We'll have a second. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes have been approved for October 10th, 2022. Mr. Director, any items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Right. We move right into our new business, downing item six, starting with A1, Perez subdivision, number 22, 1015, three lots on 8.59 acres, zoned RM, located along Meadowland Drive. Liz Perez, applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. The applicant plans to extend Meadowland Drive to create additional lots. Lot one will contain the existing house, as you can see on the plan, either on your iPads or on the screen, Mike's kind of circling it right there. Lot two will contain an existing accessory dwelling unit, which was approved several years back. This will now be considered a principal structure on that property, so it's fine. And lot three is currently vacant. Instead of a cul-de-sac, the applicant is proposing to use a hammerhead design. We did request the entire hammerhead to be part of the road's right-of-way. The original submittal only showed a portion of it, but we didn't think it was a good idea to leave a portion of the hammerhead for basically private maintenance. We felt it should be part of the road's right-of-way, so that has been changed. Our comments have been addressed. As far as we can tell, everything without this preliminary plan appears to be in good order. We'd recommend approval. Of course, they will have to submit construction drawings for that new hammerhead. We'll ensure that it meets our current design. Also, get with our fire and rescue officials, Josh Sanders, our fire marshal, to make sure. He had actually sent some information to the design engineer to make sure that they had the dimensions of this correct, but we'll verify that during that time, and then eventually you'll see a final plat for this. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Lee, you have a second. Commissioner Ava Water. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Moving down now to item B, submitted for final plat approval. Item 1, 2105, Kingwood Lane subdivision, number 22, 2051, three lots on 6.05 acres, zoned RM, located along Kingwood Lane. Hensley Group LLC are the applicants. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This plat probably looks familiar to the commission. This was approved back in August of this year. Staff discussed at that time that a fire hydrant waiver might be needed, but at the time, we didn't have the fire hydrant determination, so we just assumed at that time that if it was approved, it was approved subject to the fact that they would need a hydrant. They have gotten the results of that fire hydrant determination, and it has been determined that a hydrant cannot be supported, so that's why it's back before you tonight for the waiver, as we cannot approve an administrative plat that's less than, or I'm sorry, that has a waiver attached to it. Since this is a three-lot subdivision, residential fire sprinkler systems will be required for the two vacant lots, although the existing house on lot one will not be required to be retrofitted, although it's be for the two new lots. Our comments have been addressed. Again, this plat was in good order. It just needs the waiver. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Just for clarification, you said they were asking for a waiver for...
The fire hydrant. That fire hydrant cannot be located within 1,000 feet because the water lines out there won't support it, so they're coming back to ask for that.
So they agreed to second two houses to be sprinklers?
Well, there's not a matter of them agreeing to it. That's what the regulation is.
Any other questions or comments?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, I'm having a hard time finding it on the plans here. Is this one long driveway that will feed these three lots?
Yeah, they are showing a 50-foot cross-access easement for lots two and three. I believe lot one already has a driveway. It does. There's an existing driveway, so lots two and three will share a driveway. But both of them have road frontages, you can see with the flag lot, so that's permitted.
Okay. All right. And you guys have no problem with that?
No, sir. We've approved others like that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask, I guess, the county engineer question, please. May have to refresh my memory on this, Mike. I think maybe we discussed this in preliminary plan, but some of this area was sinkhole-ridden and had some flooding issues. Was this determined to be out of that area?
No, sir. And we have reviewed the plat, and we have required that they set minimum pad elevations to protect the future homes from, and the existing home if there's an addition on that. So what we asked them to do is look at the sinkhole spillover elevations in the area. This is the property here, right here in the yellow. You can see there's a couple large sinkholes that will build up and spill out and flow across and then go on down, so the new lots will be built up above these spillover elevations and will be verified at building codes during the construction of these houses.
Are those flagged as critical lots, or do they not quite meet the definition of a critical lot?
As long as they've got the pad that the house will sit on above these spillover elevations, we're usually good with that. A critical lot would entail having the whole lot grading and drainage, the footprint of the house. I mean, we can do that if you think we need to, but I feel comfortable with just the pad elevations being set.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. The pad elevations, I was trying to look at the contours really quick. Will they need to be constructed in such a way to still allow water to pass through between the lots? I was trying to read which way it was going.
Right.
So we don't block water on the property adjacent on either side.
Right. So it appears to me that it's around 640 is a spillover elevation from this sinkhole area will build up and spill out and go this route. And we will probably, they do have some elevation set, one foot above that, but we'll look at that again before the final plat gets recorded and approved. We might have to do that a little bit above. But typically, we make a requirement that the builder has to come up with a grading and drainage plan to run water away from, and it's typically a note on here.
That's more what I wanted to make sure of, there was a note not to block water through its natural path, even though that elevation of the house pad will be higher than the existing ground.
Number four?
Number four, yeah. It's the responsibility of each builder to design and construct a suitable grading and drainage scheme, which can convey surface water without ponding in the lot or under the house from the structure and drainage system. So we're requiring that they set a pad elevation, and then they have to get the water away from the house.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was in there. That seemed critical on this one. Thank you.
And that's pretty standard note that we have on all plats.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, seeing none, I would make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion made. Commissioner Kush, you have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Ava Water. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? 22, 2078, or 2059 is approved. Moving now into item 6B2, Town and Country Estates, 2278, three lots on 5.98 acres, zoned RM, located along Volunteer Road, Stratford James, applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. A plat for this property, again, this may look familiar, was approved by the Planning Commission back in January of this year and actually recorded back in March. The applicant is proposing to make a few lot line adjustments to the plat. If it only involved two of the lots, we'd have been able to do it administratively, but it's actually involving all three. This isn't anything we had any issues with. They're just changing some of the lot lines around to better fit what they needed. So with that, again, this plat's in good order. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Ava Water makes a motion to approve. Second, Commissioner Whitworth, further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? 22, 2078 has been approved. Moving now into 6C, submitted for site plan approvals. Item 1, Suffer Springs Business Park, lot 1, 223028, construction of a 270,000-square-foot light industrial facility with associated parking and tractor-trailer storage on 30.17 acres. Zone PUD, located along Suffer Springs Road. SFLG Murphysboro LLC, applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property, as you recall, was rezoned to Plan Unit Development, PUD, back in August of this year for an industrial park. The preliminary plan, which creates lots one and two, was approved by the Planning Commission at last month's meeting, October 24th. This site plan is for the smaller of the two buildings. The next one will be for the larger. Mike's got the master plan up there, as you can see. This was a very extensive set of plans, and the next one was even more so. So we definitely dove into this and took our time going through all this. Most of our comments, I would say, have been addressed. There are a few little tweaks and things that have to be made, but I will say, and I'm going to turn it over to Mike as far as the drainage and everything goes here in just a moment, but just a couple of things for this one and for the next one as well. As you recall, some of the conditions that we had on this particular rezoning had to do with traffic improvements. The preliminary plan did show the turn lane improvements and everything in front of the subject property on the west side of 840 on Suffer Springs Road, but also they are proposing a traffic signal and some improvements to the intersection at Leanna Road and Suffer Springs Road. So we know that those plans are underway. I mean, obviously, there's going to be a timing element along with that, but that's not something that you'll need to take a look at, but that's just wanted to give you an update as far as that goes. Also, as you recall, there is an existing TVA easement that goes through this property. The applicant has been diligently working with TVA to get that easement rerouted, and you can kind of see it on the, well, maybe not on that sheet, but on some of the plan sheets, they'll show the existing easement and then also the proposed, oh, okay, there's there, yeah, the proposed location of the easement. As far as moving earth and things like that, there's not an issue with them doing that in the easements, however, and we've been very clear about this since the beginning, that we will not allow any vertical construction until they get that agreement from TVA actually officially moving that easement. I know that there's, again, there's things going on with that, but just wanted to make sure that that got on the record. Again, drainage was also a very important issue, a large topic of conversation, so I'm going to turn it over to Mike and let him discuss that in more detail.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. If you recall from the rezoning meetings and the preliminary meetings, drainage was one of our top concerns for this area. And this area is a sinkhole-ridden, volume-sensitive area, and that's what we tasked the design team to look at, is not just meet the rate of runoff from what we typically see, but also look at the volume of water that's being generated by this. So we asked them to oversize their detention ponds and to hold back the volume of water needed to reduce the impact on the neighboring subdivisions and the neighboring properties around it. So they have done that, and we are, I'm happy with the results. And this is just a summary, and I'll try to zoom in a little bit and help you see what we asked them to do. So for the pond number one, which is the smaller building lot, you have, after it's been developed and all the new impervious surfaces, you have 305 cubic feet per second flowing into this pond. Coming out of the pond is only 1.8 CFS. That's less than 1% or something like that. I mean, it's, let's see, it's 0.6% of the water coming in and the water going out. So they have oversized these ponds to hold back the volume and release it slowly so it does not impact the surrounding properties. Let's see. They have, pond one is two times the 100-year storm event. So you could have a 100-year storm event, and then right behind it, another 100-year storm event, and it'd still be held within the detention pond. So that's, we feel very comfortable with this pond, and it's, the ponds are not going down, they're spread out, and that's the luxury of this industrial site. It's not spread out like a subdivision that will have a large step system that we have to work around. This gave us a little, a lot more flexibility to work on this stormwater management of this, these two sites. So we're feeling really comfortable with this. Like any site plan, we will re-review the construction drawings, have a pre-construction meeting, and require that they provide us as-built calculations and as-built record drawings to ensure that they meet the designs that were submitted to us. So we've got, you know, a very thorough evaluation on the front end, but also a very thorough evaluation on the back end, too, to make sure that this is built to lessen the impact of stormwater on the neighboring properties. So a long way to say, I'm very comfortable with the drainage on this, so. And Doug did mention the road improvements, the turn lane improvements. You know, we will have, because it, the proximity of the turn lane improvements and the improvements inside the TDOT's controlled access zone of this interchange, we'll have to get their approval as well as ours to make sure that everything is good with both the county and TDOT as well. And then the traffic signal at Leanna, we have not seen plans yet on that, but we know they're working on them, and they have a very good engineer working on that, third-party engineer, and we can make sure that that is, at least have a surety of that if this, these construction of these two sites are way ahead of the traffic signals. From past experience of recent traffic signals, we've incorporated into the county, there is often a long lag time, delay time, to get the materials and equipment and up and running. So we feel comfortable that once we get the plans reviewed and approved and a surety in place, that we can let them move ahead with their developments. And I'll try to answer any questions if y'all have any follow-ups on that. But I'll just say, they allowed us, we want to say kudos to the design team and the development team. We asked them, because it was such a large submittal, the plans were massive, the calculations, like I said before, was like the size of an Atlanta phone book, we asked them to allow us to defer this, to give us extra time to look at this. So, and they said they would allow us to do that, so we were very appreciative of that. I just wanted to say that.
And just to continue Doug tailing off of what Mike was saying, as far as the amount of review that'll still go into this, even if the plans are approved, I mean, even now they're, like, Mike had mentioned TDOT and some of the other outside organizations, but CUD also will have to, you know, get these plans and make any comments that they have before they get released for construction. So, you know, this is a step in the process, but there is still several that they have to go through.
Yeah. I mean, and Doug said the plans are in good order. There's just some finer, minor, fine-tuning that we'll have to do. One of them was, we want to see a larger truck-turning template. They used a 48-foot trailer, and what they'll be using is a 53-foot trailer, so it'll be a WB67 instead of a 62. And we want to make sure that the turning movements don't conflict with oncoming traffic, like you kind of see up here, just a minor thing. But these truck-turning templates are drawn by a CAD technician and not a truck driver. I know truck drivers that could turn on a dime and pick up change, and a CAD technician might not be able to make these turns as well, but we just want to verify that and make sure that these are workable turns on these sites, and there won't be any conflicts on that. So just some minor tweaking to the plans, and then I think we'll be in good order.
I think we've seen this one grow from, over the years.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say kudos to our engineering staff and the entire staff for the hard work. I know this one has been for quite a while, and to the engineers also who designed the stormwater. I think it's going to help that entire neighborhood. And if nobody else has any questions, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Ava Water. Have a second. Commissioner Kush, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Suffer Springs Business Park, lot one, is approved. Now moving down into 6C2, Suffer Springs Business Park, lot two, 223024, construction of a 1,126,400-square-foot light industrial facility with associated parking and tractor-trailer storage of 124.2 acres. Zone PUD, located along Suffer Springs Road. SFG Murphysboro LLC, applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Really, our presentation is pretty much identical to the last one that you just received from Mike and myself. This is a significantly larger building, obviously. The plans here were even thicker than the last one. So again, thanks to the, you know, Mike just reiterating what he said, thank you to the engineering team that submitted this, allowing us the extra time that we needed to get through these. But unless you have specific questions about this, our comments pretty much mimic what you just heard a few minutes ago.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Kush, have a second. Second, Commissioner Whitworth, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Suffer Springs Business Park, lot two, is approved. We'll now move into 6D, rezoning and ordinance of amendment request. Would like to mention that all rezoning request ordinance amendments will be considered at the December 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting, unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or applicant. Item one is zoning ordinance amendments, ORD 2202, new regulations for tiny homes, planning staff, ends the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm pleased tonight to bring you three different amendments that we'll discuss, and we've brought these all before you at various past meetings. But just as a quick overview on this particular item for tiny homes, our department and also building codes, we regularly, regularly, excuse me, receive inquiries on tiny homes. Most of the questions we get have to do with, A, are they allowed? B, can you have multiple tiny homes placed on a lot? Can tiny homes be used as accessory dwelling units, or mother-in-law apartments is another way that they're referred to? We're also seeing trends in more people living in campers, recreational vehicles, or what are called ready-removable structures, something you'd get like at Lowe's or Home Depot, a Dutch barn, storage building, something like that. We've had several internal meetings amongst staff, that would include us, our engineering staff, our building code staff, and also our fire and rescue folks, discussing these various issues. So we ended up bringing a presentation back to the commission in August of this year to see if there was any interest in possibly creating some regulations for tiny homes. The commission was receptive at that time and asked us to bring back some proposed amendments for talking consideration, and we brought those back in September, so about a month and a half ago or so. And following discussion of those regulations, the Planning Commission did ask us to place this on tonight's agenda for a public hearing. I have enclosed the proposed amendments with your agenda packets. It's on the page right after the, kind of the staff introduction there. I can go into as much detail as you would like on this. In a nutshell, what we're doing is we're adding some definitions. We're adding a couple different definitions for what's called a tiny home, or a manufactured tiny home, or a tiny house. The main difference being, one is site-built and one is a preassembled, permanent residential dwelling that's brought on to the property. To help combat some of the issues we've been seeing with people using ready-removables or storage buildings for occupancy, we've also added a definition for that. As we discussed, we would regulate these the same way we regulate single-wide mobile homes. If you have five acres of land or more, you can have it by right, just one. If you are less than five acres, that would require a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals in the Residential Zones, RL and RM. We did add some use-specific standards in Chapter 11 for both tiny houses and then the manufactured tiny homes. Tiny houses, again, these are the stick-built ones, would have to satisfy the requirements of Appendix Q of the International Residential Code. And the manufactured tiny homes, there's a few extra items on there, but they, the most important one is they would have to have a permanently affixed Tennessee Modular Building label on them. And we would also allow them as accessory dwelling units going through the same process as a single-wide mobile home. So that's just kind of an overview of those. Tanya Bell and Josh Sanders are both here. They can talk about the building code and the fire code in a little more detail than I can. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Of course, this does have to have a public hearing, since this is an ordinance amendment, but we'd be, again, happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Phillips.
Doug, could you kind of go through tiny house, the one that's built on site? I can kind of understand that, but what's the difference between a manufactured tiny home and a ready-removable tiny home?
Well, and I'll just jump in real quick, and Tanya and Josh, obviously, jump in if you feel the need. The manufactured tiny home is actually made for occupancy and would have a stamp on it or a plate, if you will, from the state of Tennessee. A ready-removable is just another way to define what's known as like a shed or a storage barn or something like that. We don't want to see those for human occupancy, whereas a manufactured tiny home would allow that. Does that answer your question?
Commissioners, other questions, comments? If not, I will, at this time, open the floor for a public hearing. If not, I will, at this time, open the floor for a public hearing. Remember, you have three minutes to come forward and address the commission or ask questions. Anyone? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on this zoning ordinance amendments, ORD 22002. Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion that we forward this to full commission for a vote.
Mr. Kush makes the motion. Have a second, Commissioner Avairewater, further discussion?
Just the clarification of that motion, does that mean that a motion to approve and forward?
That's what he said, I think, in his motion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? It passes. Moving now into item two, zoning ordinance amendments, OR 22003, amendments to Section 1103(c)(3)(g) regarding maximum unit size for minimum warehouse uses, planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The county's zoning ordinance currently provides a 500-square-foot limit on the maximum unit size in a mini warehouse development. Now, to clarify, that's not the entire size of the building. If you had a building that was several thousand square feet, what this is saying is the individual spaces that are in there couldn't be greater than 500 square feet. We are starting to see developments, mini warehouse-type developments, providing closed storage options for vehicles, including cars, boats, recreational vehicles, some of those things. Some of these larger vehicles cannot be stored within a 500-foot, square-foot unit. So, after researching this issue, we are proposing to increase the size from 500 square feet to 750. So, the revised regulation, as you can see on the screen or on your iPads, wherever you might be looking at it, would just change that from, again, 700, from 500 to 750 feet. All the other standards in the mini warehouse section in Chapter 11 of the ordinance would remain unchanged. We did discuss this change with the planning commission back in September, and after discussion, again, the planning commission did ask us to bring this forward for tonight's meeting. So, we'll be happy to answer any questions on this.
Questions? What was the change, again, on the footage?
It goes from 500 to 750 square feet.
Mr. Chairman, an example of 750 fair square feet would be watt foot by watt foot, just as an example.
I'm looking at Mike because math is not my strong suit.
About 20, I think it's about 25 by 30.
I tried to anticipate.
Questions? I didn't anticipate that one. I think it was 25 by 30 is what I came up with in my head there. And of course, I've been known to be awful math as well, so. If you did exactly 27.4 by 27.4, you got 750.
That's about as accurate you could get there, Commissioner Phillips. Any other questions? We've got the engineer and everybody here to answer those for you. If not, we'll move into, we'll open the floor for our public hearing at this time, dating with item number two. If there's anyone here to speak upon that item, you have three minutes to come forward, give us your name, and address the commission. Anyone here? If not, public hearing is closed on item number two. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward this to the regular county commission on December 12.
Mr. Whitworth makes a motion to approve, send on to the commission. Second, Commissioner Bogel. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Item two has been approved. Item three, zoning ordinance amendments, ORD 22004, removal of Section 404(a), variable lot size and adequate infrastructure in the RL zone, planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The residential low-density RL zoning designation was applied to property in the unincorporated county that was identified as rural under the county's comprehensive plan. Mike's pulled up a copy, well, he's pulled up the zoning map basically of Rutherford County. Excuse me. The area that we are referring to is that area in yellow, kind of on the outskirts of the county. The predominant color you see on that map is the orange, that's the residential medium density. What we're talking about won't affect that, it'll only affect those areas in the yellow. The zoning ordinance was adopted with several provisions that allowed for increased densities in the RL zone if they were able to meet certain water and sewer/step requirements in Section 404(a). Namely, what those entailed would be if you had enough, if you had septic soil for conventional septic, and you were, had enough water to support fire hydrants in your development, we would allow you to go down to basically half-acre lots. And if you were going to use step system or perhaps sewer from the city, and again, had adequate water for fire hydrants in your development, we'd let you go down to RM density, which is roughly three units per acre. Following discussion of this item, the planning commission, we started bringing a few concerns about this. For example, development patterns in an area and conditions of road and current traffic should also be considered when we're looking at developments in the more rural areas of the county, not simply if it's got enough soil for septic or step, and if there's enough water for fire hydrants. So, what we are proposing to do is to essentially eliminate that particular section, we just mark it as reserved. So, anybody who has development in the RL zone, they can still develop at one unit per acre, which is the base density of that zone. And should they feel that they have a project that could meet the, those criteria that we have as far as water, it's got water, it's got, for fire hydrant, excuse me, it's got sewer, or it's got step system, and it's got good road capacity and those kind of things, they could bring those back through for rezoning. It really allows the commission to have a little bit more oversight of these larger developments in the more rural areas of the county. So, that's kind of why we brought this before you for consideration. You know, again, this was another one of those where we've talked about this at a number of meetings, and so we're bringing this forward for your consideration tonight. Also, I would like to say it's only going to apply to new subdivisions moving forward. If there's an existing subdivision that already has preliminary approval out there in the RL district that is moving through, say, the construction plan phase now, I mean, that will still be allowed to continue under the regulations which it was approved. This will be for new subdivisions coming in. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commission, questions, comments? For clarification, is it right now that there's no terms that they could build larger lots, or is this giving them now an opportunity if they can satisfy the water sewer?
Well, they're, they'd be building more lots, they'd be smaller, they wouldn't be larger, larger lots, if I'm understanding what you're asking.
Well, I think so. I guess this ordinance, this amendment is to allow, I guess, larger neighborhoods with fewer.
It would allow, yeah, what it would require at this point, taking this out, what we're saying is in all that, in all those yellow properties on the map, that their minimum density is one unit per acre. You know, they wouldn't be allowed to go down to, say, two units an acre or three units an acre for their density unless they were to bring a rezoning request to us for consideration.
So, it just requires a rezoning request?
Correct, and that which, again, which I think gives us a little more.
That's the main change.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick, so you're not adding roads and current traffic conditions, you're taking out the water and the sewer?
Yeah, we're just removing the section, yeah. That we're not going to allow any kind of a density bonus. We're, basically what we're saying is if you want higher density, you have to come back to us for a rezoning application.
Well, you know, we spent a lot of time on traffic sheds, and we've all, as you said, we've spent a lot of time discussing the traffic issues in the county. Will this help with that?
Well, I think what it will do, I mean, it's going to put, well, it's going to put the onus on us to look at that at any rezoning application that we receive. You know, as of right now, the weight that it is, if somebody comes in in an RL area and they say, well, I've got, I'm going to use step for my sewer, and I've got enough water for fire hydrants, therefore, I'm going to go ahead and get the higher density. And we've run into this with some subdivisions where maybe the traffic and the roads in the area really aren't the way we want to see them. Now, they still, we could still require traffic studies and those kind of things, yes, but I think this gives us, again, a little bit more oversight in the fact that they'll be having to ask us to rezon property to allow them to do that, as opposed to being able to do it by right.
Gives you a better tool to use traffic and roads as an issue for building?
I believe it does, yes, ma'am.
And it opens up a public hearing, too, so they have to have the public involved to the rezoning.
This also takes into fact some of the rural area that we still have, that looks at that a little bit differently. This is somewhat, I guess you could say, and Mr. Demossi can correct me if I'm wrong, I heard a lot of this in our public meetings when we were talking about our comprehensive plan out in, just a few months ago. A lot of the people were bringing this to those public meetings, and that's what they were saying. So, that's where this comes from, a lot of that comes from there. You'll see more of it when we start developing the comprehensive plan, I would, I would think, but that was a lot of the things that were brought to us, and this is, we're just a little bit ahead of that step, but it's to begin that planning. Other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing on item three. Anyone here that wishes to address or make comments, please come forward. You'll have three minutes for your statement and give us your name. I see no one, I'll close the public hearing and open for a motion or further comments.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve zoning ordinance amendment, ORD 22004.
Chairman Phillips makes the motion, had a second by Commissioner Bogel, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? It carries, and we'll send this on to the full commission. Remember, that will go to the December 15 commission meeting is where these will be sent to. It's open now for any old business? Want to know of any old business? Staff reports or other business? Mr. Demossi?
Just a couple quick things. I just wanted to remind you of the email I sent out a week or so ago regarding the planning commission and BZA training for December the first. I'll probably send out a reminder prior to the holiday next week just to make sure that's fresh in everybody's mind. I know some of you won't, may or may not be able to make that, that's fine, we're going to have a camera recording it, and so that way, those that won't be able to be here will be able to kind of view that at their leisure. Also, I just want to take a moment to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, since this will be the last meeting we have prior to the holiday.
What time is that?
I believe we said it was going to start at nine. I don't have it right in front of me, but I think we said nine o'clock to about one, if I remember. Yes, we'll be in this room, correct.
Okay, anything else? On the training from nine to one, is Gail making lunch?
Yeah, did I tell you about that, Gail?
I'll give you my dietary restrictions later. Of course, that is December the first, you may have some leftover turkey, I mean, that's what that's going to be. All right, remember that our next commission meeting will be December 12, here at the courthouse on Monday, that'll be coming up in December. If there's no other meetings, I make this meeting adjourned.